Okay. Okay.
John.
Do that again.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, good to go? All right. Welcome to the December third, two thousand and twenty-four Bernards Township Planning Board meeting. And we will start the meeting with a salute to the flag. Everyone?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
I will read the open public meetings statement. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting of the planning board of the township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building located at One Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Burnsville News in Whippany, New Jersey and to the Courier News in Bridgewater, New Jersey on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Additionally, it was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after ten P M. and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after ten thirty P M. Next item on the agenda is the, well, let's do the roll call, Ms. Kiefer, please.
Certainly. Chairman DeMergian.
I am here.
Mr. Crane.
Here.
Mr. Cuzzo.
Here.
Mr. Iorio.
Here.
Mr. Ladizinski.
Here.
Mr. McNally, Ms. Manduke, and Ms. Smith have all indicated they are unable to attend this evening. Mrs. Master Angelo.
Here.
Mr. Seville.
Here.
Mr. Rubino.
Here.
Mr. Drill.
Here.
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Schley.
Here.
And for the record, Ms. Kiefer is present. Chairman, you have a quorum. You may proceed.
Okay, can we have a motion to excuse Ms. Manduke, Mr. McNally, and Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Iorio.
All in favor?
Right, yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular session. And I'd like to know if anyone has any comments or questions regarding the minutes. I see no comments, no questions. Can I have a motion to, first, do we have to identify who can and can't vote?
Everybody who is present this evening is eligible to vote.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I seconded it.
Mr. Seville.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Any abstains? No one abstains. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the approval of resolutions. We have five resolutions to approve this evening, beginning with the Bank of America, Block eighteen oh two, Lot twenty-five, address one two five, South Finley Avenue, application PB two four dash zero zero one. This application is being withdrawn without prejudice. Are there any, did everyone read the resolution? Does anyone have any comments? Any questions? No. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Seville, second? Anyone?
You can second.
I'll second them.
All righty. Mr. Crane.
I have to abstain.
Okay.
Mr. Cuzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Iorio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladizinski?
I have to abstain as well.
Okay. Ms. Master Angelo?
I was refused my abstain.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Chairman DeMergian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Cindy, could you change me to abstention as well? I have refused myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, you ready, Cindy?
I am.
Okay. Next resolution is Kern slash Vaccaro, application number PB two four dash zero zero two, Block sixteen oh two, Lot two point zero one, address of one seventy-four South Finley Avenue. Are there any comments or questions regarding the resolution? I see no comments. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Chairman, you are eligible. Let's see, Mr. Cuzzo is eligible, Mr. Seville and Mr. Rubino are eligible.
Those are the four. So the motion in the second has to come from those four, and only those four will be called to vote.
Can I have the motion?
Yeah, you can make the motion.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Cuzzo?
Yes.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Chairman DeMergian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you ready for the next one?
I am.
Okay, she is ready. The next resolution is Fenwick Basking Ridge Homeowners Association, Block seven seven zero two, Lots ten point zero one through ten point zero five. And so I guess the lot numbers are three, six, seven.
The addresses.
Oh, those are the addresses.
Five lots.
Oh, right, okay. Address is three, six, seven, ten, and eleven on Fenwick Place. And the application was PB seventeen dash zero zero eight C. And...
Who's eligible to vote on this one?
Chairman DeMergian, Mr. Iorio, Mr. Ladizinski, Ms. Master Angelo, Mr. Seville, Mr. Rubino.
Those are the six.
Okay, are there any comments regarding this resolution? No?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
I will second.
Was that Tyler?
Mr. Seville will second.
Thank you, Mr. Seville. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Iorio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Master Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Chairman DeMergian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The next resolution is, let's see, William and Carol Moyet, Block one one four zero one, Lot eleven, address eleven Mountain Road, application PB two two dash eleven A.
Eligible, vote.
Those same people. Chairman DeMergian, Mr. Iorio, Mr. Ladizinski, Ms. Master Angelo, Mr. Seville, Mr. Rubino.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments, questions? I see none. I will ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Master Angelo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Iorio. Roll call, Ms. Kiefer, please.
Mr. Iorio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Master Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Chairman DeMergian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Regarding the approval of resolutions, we are on the fifth, last but not least, Fellowship Village, Block nine three zero one, Lot thirty-three, eight thousand Fellowship Road, application number PB thirteen dash zero zero six. And this is the resolution, resolution of the landscape committee issues.
Landscaping conflict resolved resolution.
Yes.
And I will add, so this, this, there was a landscape committee, and that was myself, Ms. Manduke.
Right, but the resolution, this is by the planning board because that, there was a dispute.
I understand.
App sent brought up to the planning board, so who's eligible to vote on this resolution?
Chairman DeMergian, Mr. Crane, Mr. Iorio, Mr. Ladizinski, Ms. Master Angelo, Mr. Seville, Mr. Rubino.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments? I see none. Okay. Can I have a resol- A motion? Thank you. A motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Master Angelo. Roll call, please, Ms. Kiefer.
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Mr. Iorio?
Yes.
Mr. Ladizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Master Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Chairman DeMergian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is this, we're gonna change...
Why don't you move the ordinance referral up?
Okay. So, we are going to now address item number nine on the agenda, which is the ordinance referral. Ordinance number two five six seven, which is, let's see, ordinance of the township of Bernards, amending, revising, and supplementing the code of the township of Bernards, Chapter twenty-one, land development regarding uses permitted in the E-two and E-four office zones.
This ordinance is here on a master plan consistency review in accordance with the municipal land use law. And the board has, and has been handed out ahead of time, two things this evening. The first is a memo from one of the board's planning experts, Elizabeth McManus, dated December two, two thousand and twenty-four. I assume everyone's had a chance to read that, but one of the board's other planning experts is also here, Mr. Schley, and I'm gonna suggest that he summarize the memo and indicate if he agrees or disagrees with its conclusions. I also handed out before the meeting, there's an attorney sitting in the front row, Keith Loughlin. He's a partner at Inglisino Taylor, and they, he has a letter dated December three, two thousand and twenty-four, which they represent Signature Acquisitions, and Signature Acquisitions wants its position considered by the planning board. That's why I handed it out ahead of time. It could be summarizing, Mr. Loughlin, you tell me if I'm wrong, but the third paragraph on page one basically summarizes the position that the ordinance is not consistent with the master plan, correct?
That's correct.
And just for the, for the board's purpose, we first have two members who are gonna refuse themselves from this matter. Who were those members?
John Crane.
And, okay. So, if you guys just hang out in the hall, we'll call you. Now, on a master plan consistency review, it's not a public hearing. Actually, the public does not have the right to speak or give anything to the board, but it has to be done in public, and I suggested what Mr. Loughlin asked us, he could hand this out. I suggested there's nothing wrong with that. I asked the chairman, and the chairman, in the exercise of his discretion, said, you know what? All the more information, the better, let's hand it out. So, by a shaking of heads, has everyone had a chance to review both Beth's December two memo and Mr. Loughlin's December three memo?
Yes.
Okay. So my suggestion is, Mr. Schley, why don't you just, again, Beth doesn't have to be here, you don't need anyone to testify, but since you're here, why don't you summarize, I guess it's page two of her memo, and then indicate what your opinion is on this?
Yes, page two.
And you've also reviewed Mr. Loughlin's December third letter, which I gave you ahead of time, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Well, I start on page one, the summary of the ordinance. Beth hits five bullet points. There's really two main points.
Do you have a copy of Beth's memo?
I do not.
Can you give Mr. Loughlin a copy?
Thank you very much.
And there's two typos on page two, which Mr. Schley has corrected.
Yeah. Thank you. The first change is to, in the E-two zone, light manufacturing is presently a permitted use, and this amendment will eliminate light manufacturing as permitted use. And the second change is in the E-four zone, the storage and maintenance of vehicles operated by or as a business is a permitted use, and this amendment will delete that use as a permitted use in the E-four zone. And then the rest of the changes are incidental, housekeeping changes, that just go along with those two main changes. So moving...
So Beth indicated by five bullets, there were five changes that this ordinance accomplishes?
Yeah, she broke it down into five, naming the lesser changes, the permitted forms of development. For example, in the E-two zone, it's office dash laboratory, I'm sorry, office dash manufacturing right now. Of course, we're eliminating light manufacturing as permitted use, so that'll be changed to office laboratory, just like the other zones. And also, in the E-five zone, which we're not changing any of the permitted uses presently under the permitted forms of development heading there, it's termed office business zone. That designation is actually a remnant that should have been removed years ago, and the changing that to laboratory is just consistent with the current framework of zoning. If you look down to the, a couple paragraphs below there, where it says, letter A uses, and number one permitted uses, it says, these zones are designated for office and laboratory uses. And that the headings and some of the terms are just changed to be consistent with all of that.
Turn to her, page two.
Moving to page two.
Rest of the typo draft upon mistakes for the record?
Yeah. Under the heading, master plan consistency, it says, the ordinance is not inconsistent with the township's two thousand and ten master plan or the two thousand and twenty-three reexamination report. Actually, it's the two thousand and twenty-three master plan that was reviewed by Ms. McManus. It's not the reexamination report.
So we're gonna cross out for the two thousand and twenty-three reexamination report, and cross out two thousand and ten master plan, and insert two thousand and twenty-three, correct?
Correct.
And then there's one more typo, the next line, I assume?
The next heading, where it says, two thousand and twenty-three reexamination report, that should say, two thousand and twenty-three master plan.
Okay, now what about her conclusions?
And her, well, right underneath the, the main heading there, master plan consistency, is the finding that the ordinance is not inconsistent with the township's two thousand and twenty-three master plan. And she goes on to cite a few sections of the master plan that are, that support that finding. The...
You, you don't have to go through all of them, but that's, she has cited some provisions in the master plan where she says it's consistent with. And take a look at, if you would, the December three letter from Mr. Loughlin, the third paragraph on page one. In your opinion, is that a correct statement? That the letter, if the master plan specifically identifies the statutory purposes of planning and zoning that are identified in the municipal land use law, specifically NJSA forty column fifty-five D dash two, purposes of the act, and that would include, quote, "to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens." The master plan does say that, correct?
I believe it does. I'm not comparing it, but...
And, so what's your opinion on whether the ordinance amendment, whether ordinance twenty-five sixty-seven is inconsistent with this particular purpose of the master plan cited in paragraph three of the December third, two thousand and twenty-four letter?
Say that again.
Mr. Lough, the point of Mr. Loughlin's third paragraph is that its signature acquisitions position, that ordinance twenty-five sixty-seven is inconsistent with the purpose of the master plan, because it's the purpose of zoning, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations, they've underlined industrial uses.
Right.
In your opinion, does, is ordinance twenty-five sixty-seven inconsistent with that purpose?
No, I believe it's not inconsistent with the master plan for the reasons stated in Ms. McManus's letter.
I understand. Ms. McManus's memo identifies the office employment zones providing major regional corporate office and employment opportunities. She identifies three of the goals, goals one, nine, and fifteen. She identifies two of the objectives, land use and management objectives, one and four, and she identifies two non-residential development objectives, numbers one and two. I understand that you agree with Ms. McManus, that the ordinance is consistent with those. Let's say hypothetically, if the ordinance was inconsistent with the purpose of zoning to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, and the ordinance was consistent with these other things, if an ordinance is inconsistent with one part of the master plan, does that make the ordinance inconsistent? Consistent or not inconsistent?
It doesn't make it inconsistent.
Okay. And then I'm gonna get back to, in your opinion, does ordinance twenty-five sixty-seven, is it inconsistent with that one purpose cited in the third paragraph on page one of Mr. Loughlin's letter? You said it's not, but I just want it for the record.
It may be as to that one section, but I don't, I don't think that makes it inconsistent with the master plan.
Okay. So your opinion, overall, it's not inconsistent with the master plan?
No.
Okay, for the reasons stated in Beth's memo?
Correct.
And taking into account Mr. Loughlin's letter?
Understanding, yes, that.
Okay. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Schley?
Do any board members have any questions for Mr. Schley?
Everyone shaking their head, no.
No.
Someone wanna make, so here are your options.
Right.
Option one is, it's inconsistent with the master plan. Option two, it's not inconsistent with the master plan. Option three, it's consistent with the master plan.
Okay, let's go.
I recognize this is not a hearing, would I have the opportunity to respond to what your...
Well, you don't have the right, but you wanna, it's up to the chair.
Yeah, if you, I mean, I think it's, took his time to come and...
I appreciate it, and thank you for the, thank you, board, for your courtesy. Sure. My name is Keith Loughlin, L O U G H L I N, of the law firm Inglisino Taylor, and I understand that my letter was delivered today, and thank you, board members, for considering it. In addition to the paragraph that was read before, I just think it's important for the record to note that I represent Signature Acquisitions LLC, which previously filed an application with the township of Bernards zoning board for preliminary and final major site plan approval, and this is in second paragraph of my letter, to construct two mixed-use buildings of light manufacturing space and office space, which after years of meetings was denied by the zoning board on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. On the second page, which is...
I know what you're gonna read, and I'm gonna obviously let you read it, but the, the planning board, what the statute says they have to do is review the ordinance against the master plan.
Recognizing that.
Whatever your client says was proper or improper targeting by the governing body, that's not before that.
I recognize that. I just want to, I think it's important that the board have the full information as to our position here. We believe that the genesis of this ordinance is improper and a political targeted purpose to prevent our applicant from proceeding with not only the application that was denied, but any future development of the site with our proposed use. And that's all I wanted to say.
And my suggestion to the board is, okay, you listen, that's not before you. And just because he said it doesn't mean it's true or not, and this is for the township attorney, but there's case law, but this is not for the board, saying that if an ordinance has an improper and a proper purpose, if a proper purpose can uphold the ordinance, but that's beyond our strike.
Recognizing that, and I-
When this comes before the township committee for the public hearing, I assume you're gonna be there, and that's what you're gonna say.
We will be there, and we will say that, but just think it's important for the record to have that. And again, we maintain that it's not consistent for the reasons stated in our letter, and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Laughlin.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, so again, any comments?
Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
The motion?
That ordinance twenty-five sixty-seven is not going to be a part of the township's master plan of twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
I'll second. Mr. Quozzo, second, thank you, thank you, Ms. Mistrangelo. Roll call, please, Ms. Kiefer.
Mr. Crane?
Recused.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kuza?
Yes.
Mr. Riorio?
Yes.
Mr. Latizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Mistrangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Chairman Demersian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Take care.
Good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the modification of condition.
Yeah, can we get our peeps back, good point.
Always thinking, Mr. Drill. I am the only one that's a part of them.
You know what, you're right.
Representing them.
And you're doing a darn good job of it.
We have everyone back, Mr. Crane, welcome back, Mr. Seville. Did you enjoy your-
Hiatus.
Good quality.
Power nap.
We had quality time.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the modification of condition, which is an extension of time for Fellowship Village, block nine-three-zero-one, lot thirty-three, address eight thousand Fellowship Road and fifty-five Allen Road, application PB twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-five. I believe this is the staff housing, right? Okay.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Uh, yes, I can, good evening, for the record, Kenneth McPherson of the law firm Gibbons PC, on behalf of the applicant, Fellowship Village Inc., the owner and operator of the existing continuing care retirement community at eight thousand Fellowship Road and fifty-five Allen Road, designated as block ninety-three oh one, lot thirty-three, and block ninety-four oh one, lot nine.
This, this is PB twenty-two oh oh five A, so as the chairman asks, is this the staff housing?
It is.
Okay. So the board adopted a resolution when doing what?
Uh, so the, the board adopted a resolution, uh, let's see here. Uh, yes, thank you, October first, twenty-twenty-three. And our office-
Right, and that granted-
Granted preliminary and final site plan approval and conditional use approval for the construction of the staff housing at the property.
And parking, right?
Parking areas.
And that had a condition in there saying what that you are seeking to modify and extend?
Yes, condition number one of the resolution, which states-
So condition one required plan revisions?
It did, plan revisions, and they must be signed by the board by October third, twenty-twenty-four. So Fellowship is requesting a modification of that condition to allow Fellowship, our letter says ninety days, but tonight we're requesting a nine-month extension.
Okay, so you're requesting from October three, twenty-twenty-four, to what date?
Uh, July third, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, and the reason for the extension request is?
A couple different reasons, first, just on the nine months, just to allow enough time for the board's professionals to review and comment appropriately. But more, the, the bigger reasons, my colleague Jennifer Phillips Smith submitted a letter to the board, October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, requesting the modification. Fellowship has worked diligently to address the conditions of approval.
I think it was August twenty-seventh.
What did I say?
October.
Oh, August, thank you, August-
I thought it was October.
I know, I know, August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Has worked, Fellowship has worked diligently to address the conditions of approval in the resolution. However, before finalizing the tree replacement and landscaping elements of the site plan, Fellowship first undertook to resolve the landscape buffer plan for application PB thirteen dash zero-zero-six, which was the resolution that was approved, adopted this evening.
Yes, we remember that.
Very well.
Yes, yes. And that, of course, is based on the report of the landscape committee that was appointed for that application.
I bet you could say that took so much time that you needed it finally resolved before you could do-
Well, they were hoping to get some tree credit.
I understand, I understand.
Yes.
You needed that resolved-
We needed that resolved-
Before you can then get the site plan-
Before we can move ahead to finalizing these site plans because of, you know, the possibility that-
Yep.
Some of this would impact what we're proposing as far as landscaping. And I do, Fellowship does have a witness here this evening, civil engineer for the site.
Anyone have any question for the engineer?
No. But where, where are you?
Uh, well, I think the engineer, that would be a good question.
If we do have a question.
My only question is, is a nine month gonna be enough?
Um, yes, and, but we can have the engineer address that, but I think we are confident, and Mr., I think Mr. Schley might agree also.
Come on up, and again, this is-
Swear a minute?
Yeah.
I don't mind.
Let's get everyone sworn in, just in case. Does everyone here swear or affirm that testimony, you're gonna give this matter, or any comments you might make? Will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Yes. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Uh, Daniel Dockerty, Dynamic Engineering.
And can you spell your last name slowly? Okay, next.
Bryce Goode, G-O-O-D, Board Engineer.
David Schley, Board Planner.
Okay. Did you hear a couple questions, or you might as well-
Yes, I appeared before the board for the, for the application for fifty-five Allen, gave testimony for the civil engineering. As counsel had represented, we wanted to make sure we had a clear separation between the landscape items that were still open before we proceeded with resolution compliance. There are a couple of things, we didn't, we didn't expect the landscape items to really go on that long, but there are some-
Yeah, we didn't either, but they're mutual-
Sorry. So in tabling our resolution compliance, some of the items that were tabled, we did put together our plans, we've got our, basically all our plans drafted up, but one of the elements that we couldn't complete was the finalizing of the stormwater management design, more importantly, the geotechnical investigation that would go along with that. The, the township's requirements via the DEP NJAC seven colon eight, stormwater management requirements include a timeline for geotechnical investigations for the purposes of stormwater management and determining seasonal high water table. There's a time period, a wet season and a dry season, during that time period where you can perform those tests for when you don't observe actual modeling in the, in the soils. So we wanna perform those tests during the wet season, because we are precluded from being able to do that during the dry season, and so it saves us some, some double, double efforts. So that dry season, or that wet season is only from January through, through April. So at the end of April, this past two thousand twenty-four, we're precluded from being able to perform that test. So we have to wait until January to perform the tests, at which time we'd be able to promptly submit for review by your professionals for resolution compliance. I expect we'll have an exchange of some, at least one review letter, if not a couple, and that's, that's the reasoning for asking for the nine months, is that we have sufficient time and reasonable time to have that review and response take place, up and, and including some administrative time for all that to take place and have the board sign the plans, because that's really the, the end of the timeline, is for the board to sign the plans.
And nine months is gonna run from October third, so it's really seven months.
Yeah, and so is that enough time?
Uh-
It's December, that's six.
So again, it's, so is July three, twenty-twenty-five, is that enough time?
In my estimation, yes.
I understand. The board-
I mean, I just think-
Why don't you just-
Ask them more, why don't you ask for a year?
Ask for, take it out, ask to take it out to December thirty-one.
I mean, unless Mr. Schley has any-
Twenty-twenty-five.
I would think a year would do it.
Yes, the applicant would agree to that, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
That?
I would be.
Yeah, I'd just rather not see you back here.
Thank you.
In a nice way.
Oh, sure. We appreciate it.
Not taking personal, just take a look at the next agenda item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Crane, did you have a question?
Maybe you can, Chris, there, there's also the, the architect was gonna just sign.
The architect was gonna design a front-facing rear- Yes, yes, that's been completed, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The architectural renovation or revisions, per the board's comments, has been completed.
We are also- We, I think we are also gonna check the tree diameters on the site, David.
Yeah, wasn't there supposed to be-
At Bryce's office did a, a tree survey on that.
Microphone.
Really?
Yeah.
As loud as I am?
For the, for the record, for the recording.
Yes, our office completed a review of the trees on site, including diameter of the various trees, and we have provided a plan to the board, which we can reapply as necessary, but we, we did provide a plan showing a tree count.
That's all, all questions I have.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion.
Yeah.
So would someone like to make a motion to-
To modify condition number one, to extend the time within which the site plans have to be signed from October three, twenty-twenty-four, to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
I'll second. So Ms. Mistrangelo made the motion, and Mr. Demersian, second.
Mr. Crane?
What's that?
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Kuza?
Yes.
Mr. Riorio?
Yes.
Mr. Latizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Mistrangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Chairman Demersian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the, Mr. Crane?
Are you gonna be asking for extension for building permit also?
No, they won't need that, because that's tied in to, well, you better check, it's a good point. Right, check the condition in that resolution for how long you have.
It's gonna be to, it's gonna be October twenty-twenty-five, two years. So they got more time to revise the plans than they need to get a permit.
Yeah, so let's, can we come back up? Come on back up.
We need to re-change the motion.
So either give him to, give him to twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, to get the construction permit, and then maybe, what, October three, twenty-twenty-five, to get the plan revisions? Or do you wanna leave?
You guys are planning to go right to construction after the, I mean, is this a fluid?
Oh, yes, I, it's fluid there, want to develop the, the project as soon as possible.
You want to use the same date?
I, I would give it at least another six months to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Just to allow for review of construction permits.
So what condition number is the construction permit?
That, yes.
Does catch Mr. Crane?
Yes, and thank you.
Fourteen.
So please, that-
Page, do you know?
Twenty-one.
What's the current date when you need to get the construction permit?
October third, twenty-twenty-five.
So I assume that you're gonna request that condition number fourteen also be modified to extend the date by which you need to get a construction permit to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six?
Yes, we'd like to make that a specific request.
So the plans by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and the construction permits by June third, twenty-twenty-third? Correct?
Say that again?
I'm gonna amend my motion.
But let's just, just make a new motion.
Okay, I'm gonna make a new motion, right, to modify the condition for the plans to be submitted by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and the construction permits, condition number fourteen?
Yep, to be modified.
To be modified to be June third, twenty-twenty-six. Is that correct, Mr. Crane?
Yep, that's correct. So that's the new motion to replace the old motion. Someone gonna second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
It's gonna be a brand-new vote, we're gonna-
The June thirtieth?
Yeah, June thirtieth, twenty-
June third.
June, let's say it's June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, what the heck?
Thank you.
Six months after the permit.
Fine, okay, I heard June third, so.
Uh, June thirtieth would, would be great.
Okay, so June thirtieth, excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, Ms. Kiefer?
Mr. Crane?
Yes.
Kuza?
Yes.
Mr. Riorio?
Yes.
Mr. Latizinski?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Mistrangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Mr. Rubino?
Yes.
Uh, Chairman Demersian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the review of the annual parking report for Fellowship Village, block nine-three-zero-one, lot thirty-three, eight thousand Fellowship Road, application PB thirteen-dash-zero-zero-six.
And on this one, can you ask Mr. Schley, what, what role the board, what's, what's the board supposed to be doing with this?
Okay, I will ask Mr. Schley, Mr. Schley?
What's the good job?
You wanna take that, since you did this?
I think I could address it, or tried to, anyway. Thank you, again, Ken McPherson, Gibbons PC, on behalf of the applicant, Fellowship Village Inc., this is in relation, as Mr. Drill said, application number PB thirteen-dash-zero-zero-six, block ninety-three oh one, lot nine, eight thousand Fellowship Road. For the board's reference, this is the resolution adopted October eighteenth, twenty sixteen, that was preliminary and final site plan approval and conditional use approval. And in that-
For the big expansion?
For the big expansion, for which construction, you know, construction is completed. In, in that resolution, condition number twenty-two, I'll, I think I'll just read it. Okay. Condition number twenty-two, it says, "Parking Management Program dated February sixteenth, twenty sixteen. The applicant shall implement it and abide by the Parking Management Program, a copy of which is attached here too, and incorporated by reference herein." And then the other relevant portion of that, condition twenty-two, is implementation of guideline number seven of the Parking Management Program, dated February sixteenth, twenty sixteen, which states the following. Point number seven, for two full calendar years following the issuance of a permanent, of a permanent certificate of occupancy for the final building, covered by the approval of the Site Plan Application PB thirteen-dash-zero-zero-six, Fellowship will prepare a comprehensive annual parking demand study by a qualified independent professional. The annual parking report will include the conduct of onsite parking demand counts to identify peak parking demands by residents and employees as identified by decals, hang tags, visitor parking, and vacant spaces. The vacant spaces will be tabulated separately for each location, identified at number three above, and shall also include a study of the Health Center Lot and Upper Oval Parking Area. Demand studies shall be conducted on typical days of operation at Fellowship, and shall include a minimum of four weekdays during the late AM and early PM periods. A minimum of two theater events shall be included in the study to ascertain peak onsite parking for outside group events. parking for outside group events. Quick aside on, on the theater parking from, on October, on September 20th, 2022, uh, the board memorialized a resolution to granting applicants' requests to modify, uh, condition, this condition number 22, allowing the use of the onsite, uh, theater multipurpose room without any limitations, except the limitation prohibiting performances or productions on weekdays between the peak hours of four to seven. Um, and then the last paragraph of this, uh, guideline number seven of the parking management program, condition number 22, the annual parking report shall be submitted by December 1st to the planning board's staff planner and the planning and engineering consultants for review. Professionals will provide recommendations to Fellowship and the planning board for discussion at least 10 days prior to the first regularly scheduled meeting in January of the following year, calendar year. A public hearing will not be required for this review, and attendance by Fellowship is discretionary. Fellowship will voluntarily comply with the planning board's decision. We don't have witnesses here tonight, uh, Fellowship, um, they have a holiday tree lighting event going on this evening, otherwise, um, Mark Aguilar, the executive director, would have been here, uh, this evening. And also, our, our Fellowship's consulting engineer, Mr. Gary Dean, was also unavailable uh, tonight. But nevertheless, um, so that's the condition. And speaking of Gary Dean of Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers, he submitted a, uh, the park, the required parking evaluation report on May 3rd, 2024. Uh, Fellowship submitted an additional parking report dated September 27th, 2024, uh, to address the corresponding report of, uh, Mr. Good, the board's engineer, dated July 15th, 2024. And then, uh, Mr. Good issued an additional report, uh, dated November 12th, 2024, uh, which notably found that the existing parking capacity at Fellowship's property is sufficient to meet Fellowship's current demands. Our office submitted a letter to the board, uh, from my colleague Ms. Smith, dated, uh, November 25th, 2024, in which, uh, Fellowship agrees to address the remaining parking data discrepancies, as well as the status of the parking program, uh, the implementation of the parking program guidelines.
Wait, what was that last date?
Uh, sure, November 25th, 2024?
November, you're right, I'm sorry.
Thank you for double checking me, I was, I was wrong before, so I appreciate it. Okay, um, so Fellowship said they would, in our letter, would address those in the next report. We're, we're asking, uh, this evening that, uh, the board withhold any judgment on additional reports thereafter until, until we have a chance to address those which we're confident, and Mr. Dean is confident, uh, that he can do adequately. And that, that's pretty much it.
So, uh, there were several letters, uh, I know, Bryce, you've been working with Mr. Dean, or there was some, 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 uh, uh, discussion between the two of you, and you still had some recommendations, right?
Yes, sir, so, so to take a step back, uh, to answer Mr. Drill's question, uh, we as the board engineer, uh, as noted in the reading of the condition, uh, 22, guideline seven, that the annual report will be submitted for review. So that report from May 3rd, as noted, was submitted, we did a review on July 15th, as noted, a response was provided to us on September 27th, as noted, and we issued a new report on November 12th. Since that time, I had a conversation with Mr. Dean of Dolan and Dean about our reports, both reports, specifically the latest report, and what can be done to rectify the various items that are identified in our two reports. Mainly, the items that are identified in the two reports for the edification of the board, you have our report, I'm sure you've read it, but the highlights are that, um, the resolution was very specific on what needed to be provided, uh, the number of reports, when they were, to the, to the fact of the date of when they need to be submitted by, and one information was to be included, um, identifying peak data at certain times of the day, uh, and very specifically to each of the parking areas. So some of that needs to be resolved. Also, the resolution had 11 guidelines in condition number 22, not all 11 guidelines were identified and reported to in the annual report that was provided. Mr. Dean, it, you know, fully believes that he can address those in future report, reports, uh, we'll leave that up to the board's discretion. We believe that two may be necessary, one for sure is obviously absolutely necessary. Though we do identify in our report that it appears that the parking is sufficient, there's quite a bit of discrepancies in the data that was provided. Um, the, the data that was provided was pretty comprehensive by the onsite staff, to the point where they counted parking more times than was needed in the resolution, it just was not presented in that manner. And one of the biggest discrepancies that we found was, these were averages that they did on a monthly basis for the years 21, 22, and 23. Reviewing that data, we found there was averages, and the, and what was in this report was available parking spaces. For example, the available parking spaces in August of, for the Antioch, parking handicap was 2.1, the average was 2.1 available parking spaces. There's two handicap spaces. How do you have more available than you have parking? It's an average, so therefore some are below, some are over, but how do you possibly have more available than there is? And handicap parking is a pretty simple one, they're marked, so, and I'm not trying to demean the person who did the work, but I'm sure they did it diligently. What our stance is, looking at this data, it brings a point of how accurate is the data if I find these obvious issues? And that's what, you know, this is one example. There's multiple of those examples throughout the reports, and that was the one that was the obvious, was that, you know, wait a minute, how do you have more available spaces than there are spaces? There's a lot of discrepancies between the plan of how many parking spaces were in each parking lot, you know, was there 120, 127, 124? That needs to be tied down, there is a certain number of parking spaces that were in the approved plans, so those should be consistent throughout.
Who's, who compiled the data? Did Mr. Dean's office compile it, or did Fellowship staff compile it, give it to Mr. Dean, and he put it in a chart, or what?
So in May, in, in Mr. Dean's, to May 30th, 2024 report, he included a single peak demand count that they did on April 12th of 2024 from 10 AM and at 4 PM, so they did the AM and PM on that one specific day. That was done by Mr. Dean's office.
Everything else was done by?
Yeah, everything else was done, completed by staff at Fellowship Village. I don't know how many counts they did, they, they provided tables, three tables for the different years, every month for all the available, all the different parking spaces through the different parking lots.
Can you go, read the condition again, read the condition in the planning board's resolution.
Specifically, um, it's guideline number seven.
Right.
Right.
So guideline seven, just picking out the piece. Demand studies shall be conducted on typical days of operation at Fellowship Village and shall include a minimum of four weekdays during the late AM and early PM periods. A minimum of two theater events shall be included.
So stop for a second. But it doesn't say who's supposed to do the demand study. But guideline seven came from Mr. Dean's office, correct? I believe, my recollection, it's been a while, but my recollection is that these guidelines, the board asked for suggestions, he made these suggestions, he, Mr. Dean submitted this, and the board then accepted that and made it a condition in the resolution.
So earlier in, in guideline seven. Fellowship Village will prepare a comprehensive annual parking demand study to be completed by a qualified independent professional.
Right.
So not established?
Correct, so to be, it's crystal clear that that hasn't been done.
Well, the report was submitted by a qualified.
I understand, read, read that sentence again.
But it has to be completed.
So.
I just want to hear.
Will prepare a comprehensive annual parking demand study to be completed by a qualified independent professional.
To be completed by.
And, and it says study, not report.
Right.
So.
Either way, we'll comply in the next report.
So the, the, so when I said before, so what? So the, the board has this report. Seems to me you have, again, just like you have poss, different scenarios, one is to say, yeah, we'll wait till the next one, till, for you to do it right, or you could say, you know what?
So, how, how, how many reports were they supposed to do, and how?
Two.
What intervals?
So they were supposed to do two full calendar year, for, for four, two full calendar years, so they're supposed to do two reports on a calendar year basis, to submit it by December 1st of each year.
Once the certificate of occupancy for the final building has been issued, which, you know, we have one report, that's the timeframe.
So when you say of, for a full calendar year?
So it's two.
It's two reports?
Two reports for two, for, for full calendar years, meaning, in order to meet this requirement of the four weekdays and all that sort, and, and the theater events, it gave them time to do that data. The resolution wasn't specific to say that you had to do counts every single week, every single month, or anything like that, it just, you had to do a report once a year to provide data on typical days and during the peak days. Now, identify how many, how many typical days, that sort of thing. This constitutes one report.
And it wasn't averages, right?
The, the, the resolution spoke, spoke nothing of averages, it was all.
Well, it spoke pretty clearly about counts.
Right.
Not averages.
Not averages, right. So, a report has been issued, and this is why we're recommending that two more be done. The board can decide after the next one if they find that they've really addressed all of our concerns and discrepancies that one is enough. It appears, overall.
What, what's the next report due, like sometime around June-ish?
So the resolution stated that December 1st.
A year from now.
No, this year, this year.
Well.
This year, 2025.
They're trying to ameliorate what they, or just to sit on.
Right, and we're confident we could do that.
So they submitted a report in 2024, it was submitted in May of 2024. The resolution said they submit reports by December 1st. Okay, so the timing is off, okay? So to say that they need to submit by December 1st of 2024, well, they did submit a report by December 1st.
They submitted it in May.
In May.
But it was submitted before December 1st.
So the next report is due by December 1st.
2025.
Right.
Which would be 2025.
This is where I'm going with this. The May report didn't follow the guidelines of what, of the condition, right, basically?
So it wasn't a submitted report?
So, what?
It wasn't a?
Well, I could try to address that, it's, it's an attempt that it committed, a report.
It had a lot of issues.
It's kind of a.
Or had some issues, we'll say.
Technical professionals back and forth.
So, the next report, in other words, do you, when do you restart the clock, with, using a professional? If they've been collecting data with this, doing it the same way since May, or since the last report? It's, that timeframe is, you know.
Can I ask him something?
Yes.
Is what you're requesting through Mr. Dean, that the board basically give you a pass on this one, and wait till the report that has to be submitted before December 1, 2025, to see if you're doing it right? Is that your request, correct?
In essence, I wouldn't phrase it, give us a pass, it's a little bit, uh, you know, it's kind of a, we're trying our best to comply with the condition.
But what they are requesting is that.
We don't, we don't make them do two more reports and throw this one out.
Then you don't make them do a redo on this one?
Right, I don't know.
That you wait until the report gets due before December 1, 2025. I'm not taking a position on this, I'm just saying.
I understand, I understand.
So.
I, I just want to make sure they do it right, so in other words, if they were going to use data from six months ago, you've been collecting that data, that they did it wrong the first time, you got, well, the report isn't due till next December?
Right, well, I'll tell you, Mr. Chair, I'll tell you, Fellowship and Mr. Dean are very intent on getting it right, since, in this process of a lot of letters, it's been a lot of work, a lot more focus, um, on all sides, from our side, Mr. Dean is going to be focused on working with.
Yeah, I mean, and I didn't dig, you know, this is Bryce's job, I read the reports, there was like, you know, it was, it would have taken me six hours just to.
Right, there's a lot.
That's why you guys.
That's why we pay him.
That's right.
I didn't take six hours.
And you did a great job, by the way, Bryce, seriously. Go ahead, Ms. Master Angelo.
My question is, your bottom line is you think there is sufficient parking, it's just the manner of collection of the data has been a little inconsistent.
So it, it, it appears, like I said, there's a lot of, it's a lot of discrepancies that need to be clarified. Overall, for the whole facility, it appears that there's, there's enough parking based upon the counts, average, not average, peak.
So we don't need to look for a problem, we can give them some time.
It, it appears that there is parking available throughout the whole site. Now, is each individual parking lot?
Right.
I don't, I can't analyze that properly because of the inconsistencies, it's too hard to sell, which Mr. Dean and I discussed. Like I said, we had a phone conversation, my, you know, based upon that phone conversation, I have confidence that Mr. Dean understands what we're looking for.
Can I make a suggestion? Whatever the board's going to decide on this, there should be a memorialization of that, so it, there should be some document coming from you, Bryce, and Mr. Dean, or, you know, getting a confirmation that this is what they will do going forward. And, and then, then the board can do a resolution, not tonight, let's just see what the board, how the board wants to handle it, but then have it done with a piece of paper that Bryce runs by Mr. Dean, and then Bryce tells us, this is what they're going to do for this, the next report that's due before December 1, 2025, if that's what you're going to.
I think that's the next idea.
Is that in your final letter, sort of?
With, with respect, Mr. Drill, I would say that that is in the November 12th report.
Does Mr. Dean agree with everything?
Yes.
Yes.
Because he told you on the phone?
Yes.
But if Mr. Dean was replaced, we don't have a resolution in place.
You still have my November 12th, 2024 report.
Agreement by Fellowship.
Well, we're on the record.
Right, put it on the record, you agree with everything Bryce said in his November 25th?
Yes, yes, and we think the November, we can address, it's specific enough, Mr. Good did a good job on the most recent, all of them, but November 12th specifically, uh, Fellowship and Mr. Dean feel like we have a clear idea of how to address it, and are working now to do it.
So you could, we could do a resolution then, tonight, based on his November 25th letter, based on the representation of Fellowship's attorney, that they agree with everything in there, if that's the way you want to go, and not make them do a redo.
It's November 12th.
November 12th, yeah.
Well, I, I don't think we're ready to decide if we want to redo, we want to look at the next parking report, right?
Our recommendation at a minimum, in our, in the November 12th report, we recommend two more reports. If the, based upon the November 25th letter from Fellowship Village, they're asking for only one more.
Because.
They're saying, don't.
So what I would, what I recommend tonight to the board is to, at a minimum, one more report to determine if they provide everything that's in the resolution, and I'm not trying to question their data, they need to follow what's in the resolution.
Stop for a second, you guys agree with everything in, in his November 12, 2024 letter, including two reports?
No, not the two reports, we, uh, in our letter, submitted, um, November 25, thank you, uh, we asked the board to withhold judgment on whether two additional reports are needed, but just to.
Right, until when, we call judgment until?
Until the, Mr. Good has an opportunity to.
Till the next report is submitted.
Review the ad hoc.
And when's the next report going to be submitted?
Well, it has to be submitted before the end of the year, but the board, well, I mean.
Before the end of 2024.
That's a year out.
Right.
2024 or 2025?
2025.
Year old, so it's, two in one year.
Right, so, so they agree with everything in Bryce's letter, except.
They don't want to do.
They don't want to do two reports, they want to do one report, they want the board to withhold judgment for a year.
Because we're confident we can address it, and get it into you sooner rather than later.
Well, okay, sooner rather than later, so how soon, how, how soon before December 1st?
I'd, Mr. Dean would be able to, I don't want to, you know, necessarily throw out a data.
That's what I was saying, I don't, if you're going to have some, you're going to deliberate and have some idea of what you want done, but I don't think we can do a resolution until we get answers to this, to exactly what, at least they're willing to do it, we're not willing to make them do it, but that's, that's the request.
Mr. Good, when would you like the two, the two reports by? Mr. Good, when would you like the two, the two reports by? When would you like the next report by?
I don't want to, I don't necessarily want to drag things out. I believe, though, to get, to give the best opportunity for Fellowship Village to address these items in one report. Allow them to collect data that follows the resolution, provide a report that follows the resolution.
By when, by when?
Give them until December first of twenty-twenty-five.
So they need to-
So you agree with them?
If they submit earlier, that's fine, but I think that would be, I think we stick to what, because basically what we're looking for is them to follow the resolution. The resolution says December first.
Backing off the two reports, you're now saying one report by December one, twenty-twenty-five, as long as they follow everything else in your letter. Is that correct?
So my recommendation tonight is that, yes, let them do one contingent upon them doing everything that was asked of them. And at that time, the board can evaluate if an additional report is necessary.
So, based on your-
But at the end of the day, when we eventually get this one report, and it's, you know, November thirtieth, and that report is insufficient for, by your standards, and then ultimately our standards, we have no time for a second, or even third report within the calendar year of twenty-twenty-five.
That would be correct. The, the original plan was to do calendar years, so the plan would be if they submit, in your hypothetical, they submit November thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five, we review it in ten days, we say it's, we recommend that it's not sufficient. The board agrees with our recommendation it's not sufficient. They would have to do another report in twenty-twenty-six.
So, Mr. Good, what, you know, I wish you weren't backing down from your two reports. Now, can you clarify what those two reports are? So the first report, what I think, what you're saying is that first report is a redo of the twenty-twenty-four report. The report that should have taken place and should have been accurate. I think if we do that, I think there will then be an alignment on what you're expecting, what the applicant is expecting, and we get this all right the first time, so to speak. I don't think a redo, I don't think they can redo it because, just because the data has to be collected. It wasn't collected correctly. So I think, I, I read Bryce's letter saying he wants one by June thirtieth, then you can tell if they're on the right track, and then the second one by December first. Now, he didn't have the dates in there, but that's how I read that. Am I right? Thank you, Mr. Drill, from the letter, the intent of the letter.
No.
Okay, what was the intent of the two, the two reports, when and when?
By December first of each calendar year.
Okay, but what data would you be using in that first report?
The new data that they're collecting that matches the resolution. I would not consider the twenty-twenty-five report as a redo of the twenty-twenty-four report because they're collecting new data.
Okay, but the new data for the two reports, all the data sets will be coming from twenty-twenty-five?
That would be my understanding, unless they have data collected in late of twenty-twenty-four, because the report was from May. They may have data they've been collecting since-
We've been collecting data, is my understanding. Fellowship has been.
Yeah, but it's, it's, again, that goes back to my point before. It's got to be collected by, properly, right? But is that part of the problem, that Fellowship collected the data, it wasn't collected by the independent?
We don't know at this point how the delay, the data that was collected in twenty-twenty-four, after the May report was issued, how that was collected or what was collected. That will be determined once we see it in the report.
And we could clarify that in the next report, exactly who collected the data.
In other words, we just don't know how the data is being collected, but we have to assume, because this didn't surface until recently, that it wasn't collected per the conditions.
No, we, I mean, Fellowship would say that the data was collected onsite, as required by the resolution, and-
Sighted by an independent person?
Well, there was a site visit by Mr. Dean.
So it was not collected by independent authority, which is the issue. So, so think-
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, please.
Can I make a recommendation?
Let, let's get a report by June. Make it that commitment, and, and we'll-
So you're saying to the planning board, withhold judgment, get a report by June thirtieth?
By, by, by Dean, by professional.
His office has to collect the data, his office completes the report, the study. His office collects the data, his office completes the study by, submits it by June thirtieth, and then the board withhold its judgment until then, will forget about what happened in this last one. You get Bryce's opinion on that, and then you guys can just say, yeah, we're good. You'll do one last report.
We may waive it.
Or you might waive it.
Yeah, so in other words, you're asking us not to commit to two reports. I think we're all willing to, at this time, not commit to the requirement for two more reports.
Provided that they submit.
What is required.
What is required by June thirtieth, and the board's interpretation of what is required is data collection and report prepara, study preparation and study completion, all by the independent entity, not by staff, by Mr. Dean and/or his office. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And Fellowship, that, that's reasonable. Fellowship, you know, they want nothing more than to finish this out with exactly what Mr. Good is looking for.
So I don't have to do any resolution on that because we're going to have all this in the minutes, right, Cindy?
Yes.
One possible.
Yes.
We will manage. So in other words, more reserved judgment, it's, that's secure.
For the minutes, make a motion.
Well, wait, I'm not ready. I have a couple other minor, maybe silly questions, but I'm going to ask you anyway. So the data had, for example, two-point-one, two-point-two parking spaces, right?
Available parking.
Available. But can you have a fraction of a parking space available? Like, should they round down?
So, these were, these were averages.
Should be averages, at least.
So, by having an average, you do a count, and you do a, I count two, I count three, I count two, I count four, I count one. One plus two plus two plus three plus four divided by five is a, is a decimal.
Right.
And that's what they came up with. It should not be an average.
So we're on the same page, but you, you went like this, and I went like that, right? Like the FedEx commercial.
He's saying there shouldn't be-
No averages.
Fair enough.
Should not be an average. It should be typical days and peak demands.
And that's what his letter says.
Now, at the end of the day, when we get the, the report with, with the properly acquired data, and it, and what if we don't have enough parking spaces?
Well, even with, this is the report we submitted, Mr. Good's reports, well, I don't know. I'll try to address your hypothetical after, but the report finds that there is adequate parking at Fellowship for the current demand. That's in the report now. That's, you know.
Okay.
You're putting a, don't create a problem right now.
I'm already looking for the solution, but, okay, fair enough.
You have a problem. Your own problem is the report was done incorrectly. The study was done incorrectly. They're agreeing to do it correctly, and getting it submitted by June thirtieth. You guys would be agreeing to withhold judgment until you review that.
I'm good with that. We're wrapping up.
Yeah, so the, our board attorney suggested that we make a motion.
Yeah, the motion would be, from what I'm hearing, is the board would make a motion to withhold judgment on the parking study issue until after reviewing a new report to be submitted by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, and that report to be done, and the study done, in accordance with condition, guideline seven and condition twenty-two, which is everything is done by the independent traffic consultant, both the counts, everything.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
So moved, so, if it's a, what he said.
Yes, I would so move as to what Mr. Drill has just outlined.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Mrs. Strangilo.
Mr. Craig.
Yes.
And Mr. Guzzo.
Yes.
Mr. Iorio.
Yes.
Mr. Ladazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Master Angelo.
Yes.
Mr. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Rubino.
Yes.
Chairman Demarche.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is any comments from members? Board members? John, you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. Somebody might know, I've been in the building industry, development industry, retired now for about forty-five years. Through those years, I got to see a lot of planning boards. This planning board is one of the top-notch ones that I've seen. And we should be proud of the diverse, well-educated people that we've got here.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
What do you want, John? I got a can of wine.
I got a can of wine, that's what I really talk about.
And John, I just want to say that, in all seriousness, you, your input on this board is very, very helpful. Certainly to me, as the chairman, I, you know, I appreciate your expertise, and, yeah.
Can I say something? And I enjoy sitting next to him, and I hope you'll be next to me for the coming year.
I want a year to year.
And, yeah, so thank you, and to the entire board and the professionals, and Bryce, I think you did a great job on that parking report. I read through these memo, they're like, you know, where are we going with this? But, yeah, so, so great job, and David, as always, and Cindy, thank you, thank you, thank you. And everybody, Dan, and, and, so. Next item, I guess that's it. Other comments?
Do we have a January meeting at this?
Well, actually, we're not ready, we, I think we have a December seventeen-
We have a December seventeenth meeting that-
At this time, we are not prepared to cancel.
I will not know until Friday at the earliest as to whether we're going to have that meeting or not, but as soon as I know, you will know.
Okay, thanks. I'll be here for that.
Okay.
And other Fellowship Village, have you got any other comments, questions? No?
Steph, no, again? Okay, Mr. Rubino?
Yes, question for Bryce. The, the parking spaces, at two-point-one is the average. Those are handicap spaces?
I'm going to look real quick so I don't misspeak. Off the top of my head, most of those ended up being hard handicap spaces, which was interesting in, in that sense.
Right, so I'm just wondering, because there's going to be so, so, you know, so many more regular spaces over handicap spaces. Should they distinguish the two when they do the averages, so they don't get distorted?
They, they do, right?
So, they, they are, they do distinguish between all the various spaces. There are handicap, there's fifteen-minute parking.
He was just using that as an example of discrepancy that was flying off the page.
Right, yeah, sorry about how they do that, but it's, yeah, so, gotcha.
Okay, I, I have, any others? No, I have one other question, or, yeah, question for Ms. Kiefer. You sent out this, it's a state development and redevelopment plan cross-acceptance letter that was written to the mayor?
Yes.
Or do we, there was some mention of planning in here?
Those are always, those are always forwarded to me, and since they're of a planning nature, I've been asked to forward them to the board, if there's any interest in reading them or whatever, but that's exactly why. It's kind of an FYI.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Paul, to that point, or Chairman, to that point, there, I think there's an assignment of representation.
Yes.
And so was that assignment made? Do you know, Cindy?
I, I, no, not, I, it is not something that, that comes under my purview, and I don't know.
Okay.
The township did decide that, and the county, and the State Planning Commission accepted the fact that the township will go with Somerset County as their representative and coordinator, and like we had done in the past.
Gotcha.
Actually, I think there was a suggestion from the Highlands Council, but the Highlands Council would be the, the go-between, between the town and the, and the cross-acceptance.
Okay. In other words, there's no action on our part?
No, 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 not at this point.
Okay, on that note, if there are no other questions, comments, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Second, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Parking.